We've scheduled this for a half hour because of the event tonight, but I'll go at your pace. But I built it to be a half hour, I hope.
Okay.
So, we're gonna talk about the 25-26 budget, we'll talk about the food service program, electric buses, the middle school project. Each of these ones that I've listed recommendation requested, I'm gonna be asking for a motion to the full board so they can take action on the 25th of June. With the middle school project, a new intent to reimburse, which I think I handed out on the 19th meeting, and then a transfer to the, from the facilities and renovation trust fund to satisfy expenses for the middle school project today. And then I did it non-public in the event we needed it for any of these topics and it qualified, okay? So, I'll first go with the FY25 budget. So, in front of you is a handout, it's about eight pages, but I'll do the summary up top. You will see a little box that says, "Description expenditures, 2024, $128,258." So, that is funds that were encumbered from last year that got released because we didn't spend them, so they carry over into this year. Right now, we're projecting, and you could see a projected balance column. We went through and plugged in numbers that we thought there, they, we tried to be conservative. So, we might have about $3 million in expenditures that, in savings. Then, I took the encumbrance column from all the 6-2s, notice 6-1,000 says salaries. If you turn the page, it says 6-2,000, benefits. I only took it from benefits all the way down to 6-8, the, um, which is the dues, fees, and interest. Trying to be, what'll happen is as those encumbrances change, then the availability should go up or down. So, this is dynamic, this is, this number's already changed three times since Friday.
Yeah.
So, it will continue to adjust.
Yeah.
And then the revenues, I took all the revenues that we've projected based on what we think we're getting from Deerfield and State, wherever that is. And that's showing right now, this is without the transfers, that would be short $2.8 million. Now, what I usually do, if you remember when you do your motions in March, I say "up to," because I don't tap the trusts unless, when we use it to balance the budget, but if in fact savings and everything happens, then we don't, um, we don't pull from them. But, it's highly likely that we're gonna have to
Yeah.
this year, because it's running, um, if you go just, if you go to page, uh, let's see, I'm on, you know, page three of eight, you'll see that, that one in red, 101.121 million, that's, you know, professional services for, you know, some of the OT, PT, nursing services are all in that, that's over by 1.1 million. And then, other professional services, 176,000. There's a little bit of that in there, and there's a little bit of stuff for the buildings. Um, I'm just pointing out the big ones, and then if you go to page four of eight, same ones I've really been repeating all year, you could see the transportation from other services, 1.8 million. I mean, the good part, there's encumbrances of 423, but, you know, if that gets eaten up, that's, then, there won't be much left.
Do we, um, sorry.
Yeah.
Do, oh, you go first. You get your hand up?
Yes, I did, but it's like... Um, sorry, coming back to the professional services line item, the 1.1 million, um, are we seeing the shortfall here as a result of the lack of state reimbursement, or is this just overcharge that was unexpected?
This is services being provided either by us not being able to hire it, or the needs of the student, and we can't provide it.
And...
And I can give you a break out of the services.
But it's not connected to the state's reimbursement of our special education?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any idea yet, the potential impact the, um, school vouchers may have with us?
Don't.
Okay, so it's just sitting away, and that could?
Yeah.
And it's not, and shame on me for not knowing this, um, and it's not, it's a cap based on how many applicants, not necessarily by district, right, by state?
10,000.
10,000, maybe 10,000 from Concord or...
But they've lifted the income cap, so there's no income cap.
Yeah, there is none.
So, we will see what comes and goes.
Okay.
That will affect coming budget more than this, right?
Yeah, because right now, it's in the rear, so October, when they give us the number, they're looking at our E, our BOI and EOI numbers for this year. So, you'll start to see it the following year. I mean, I, I believe SB99, which is the one for the CRTC open enrollment, I think that that has voted to move on.
Yeah.
So, we'll see something there, what that impact is, we don't know yet. And then, um, I don't know where open enrollment sits as it relates to public schools yet.
Okay.
And it's also still my understanding that the EFA money can't be used at, to public schools. That's at least the last update I got from Dean a week and a half ago.
Thank you. My apologies, it is next year.
That's okay.
I'm jumping.
I figure you don't know what they're doing until June 30th.
Yeah.
As long as they get there, then maybe we'll have a better idea, and then we'll start to project.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, and then, as I mentioned with the revenues, and I'm gonna pop out of this just to give you an idea for a second, um, what this is, what I'm trying to do. So, as I mentioned, if I, um, I'm gonna just hit something to have this duplicated.
It's usually at the end, right? Yeah.
Then I'll come back to the presentation. I know this is small, um, but I'll try to zoom in if I can, zoom in 200. So, just to show you know, if I go down into the transfers, okay, into the revenues, let me scroll down. As you can see, in your budget, you had proposed out of the building and renovation maintenance fund, 515 instructional trust fund, how the dental fund, and the special education trust fund, and the technology fund. So, when I scroll over here, see how I have all those negatives in there? That's why that's bringing that down. If I would've said, "Hey, we're gonna bring all those in," now your balance is gonna go up now at five and a half million. Obviously, we're not gonna do that because it makes no sense to artificially inflate that, but that is where we will start tapping, trying to get to your 2.8 that you need to carry. But there's some challenges with some things that we'll try to, to do. But that's where we tried to build this, so I go in every day, I'll refresh it, look at it, and then, you know, see if we get any newer information as to where we think it's gonna go. Obviously, on the 25th, we'll be a little closer because we still have one more day of school left, and then things will really start rolling. We, this is the last payroll, official payroll, then after that, we do all the balloon checks, and I think they're getting cut, um, by the 25th. So, I'd like to have all that done, so this way, this is refreshed and I have some idea. There'll be some stuff to come in July that we have to crew back, but we'll start to get some idea of where this stands. So, we will see, but that's how we're, right now, managing it. So, you need 2.8 to go over, if it's all stopped now, you'd have 2,884. I'm not that good. It's just where it's coming out to be right now, okay? So, we will see. I'm gonna go into the presentation. So, that's the handout. Now, the one thing that, on this sheet, if you go to page, seven of eight, and if you look at the number 519903, it says insurance claim proceeds, 59,576. So, obviously, I am not buying the chargers, and they're not gonna be here by June 30th, okay? So, what I'm doing in this motion is I am appropriating that money now to have you put it into your school building maintenance fund, and then you're gonna see a motion for 26 for it to come out.
Okay.
Because if I spend it, they're gonna accrue it forward anyway and say, "You didn't, you bought it, but you didn't pay for it, you didn't install it, so it has to be next year." But I don't wanna lose that, because remember, this is the insurance proceeds we got from that bus that was totaled, and we're gonna use that to pay for the chargers.
Yep.
So, it's an up to amount, um, and I may not need all of it, but at least we have it in a place protected to move forward. So, that's what this motion will do, to rec, with this recommendation, I should say, for the board for the 25th.
Am I allowed to propose a motion?
As the chair?
Sure.
Yeah. We go, I'll take turns, because we're gonna have a bunch of these tonight. All right.
We'll have a couple.
I propose that we move that the finance committee recommend that the Board of Education transfer $59,576 to the school building maintenance fund to fund the purchase of electric chargers for the three new electric school buses. The chargers will be located within the space the district leases from the city at the common operations maintenance facility, the CONF. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sustain or abstain? Discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, I can never do this, pass. Thank you. I need to, like, laminate a sheet in front of me.
I, yes, I can do that for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just hand drew mine back in the day.
Did you have one?
Oh, yeah, I, I did this so that I would remember different things.
To go through the motions, get it?
Yeah. Actually funny.
I practiced on my way here, and I still...
So...
All good, that motion passes, so we're good.
That's good.
What's next?
Okay, so I'll move to the 26 budget. Obviously, 25, we're still trying to get that there, I'm hoping it just comes in at the 2.8, and we're good. If there's more than that, we'll talk about that in July and August. So, for the 26 budget, there may be potential adjustments that we recommend in September or October, usually the finance committee meets ahead of time, um, if there is any, based on what happens at the state level. We won't know valuation until the end of October. So, the final vote on your budget would be, I'm, I'm tentatively putting as Monday, October 27th. That gives the city plenty of time to get their evaluation, tax bills go out, I think they need to be to the printers by November 1st for them to go out December 1st, so it is about the time we schedule that special board meeting, because you'll have the valuation, we put it in, and we see where everything stands. But, we also wanted to give you a grant update as to where they are, they're coming in for the most part, flat, um, oh, negative, but, you know, by 145, but, you know, as we were talking today, there'll be some things, maybe some supplies or some special things that we try to do, but for the most part, we should be able to cover the staffing. I think you're gonna see a lot of that, whether it's feds or the state, just downshifting.
Yeah.
All that stuff will stay flat or a little bit below, and then it's gonna be here. Obviously, the 25 budget, we hit that 2.8, 26 is gonna be hard, I think your 27 budget's really gonna be difficult. I just, that's just a gut feeling, um, based on how this all, this flattening, because, you know, salaries usually go up on a loan, one and a half to two million. Salaries and benefits, two and a half, three, so, you know, we'll have to see, but let's take it as it comes.
Challenging?
Yep, probably will. So, um, this is the other part of that motion where we take it out of the school building maintenance fund and bring it to the general fund for the chargers. So, that's what this motion will do, because we're gonna expend that 26, okay?
Okay, so, um, I would like to move that the finance committee recommend to the full board, the Concord Board of Education, that the Board of Education transfer up to $59,576 from the school building maintenance fund to the general fund to fund the purchase of electric chargers for the three new electric school buses. The chargers will be located within the space the district leases from the city at the common operations maintenance facility, the CONF.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Steen, any discussion? Motion passes.
Okay.
I took it.
So, you're gonna have a discussion before the vote? So, discussion happens before? But, we already discussed, so we're good. I appreciate you guys.
It's, it's our committee, we know.
I appreciate you guys.
Okay. So, next is the food service budget, okay? First is the meal balances, this is as of 6/12. We were a little over 108, it's come down to 107, hasn't moved much. Tomorrow's the last day of school, so we will, in earnest, do our best to try to collect this. As you can see, not much in the free and reduced column, which we do get, but the paid column you can see is rather high. So, under your, um, policy, it has that at the end of fiscal year, uncollected debt in the student meal accounts must, as a last resort to fulfill federal requirements, be paid to the school meals program. So, we have to appropriate money from the general fund and pay the food service fund. And then, the district will own, the general fund will own that debt, and so we're gonna try to collect, we can between now and the 30th, and anything after that will be put in, and we'll send out to collect through the general fund, but we have to satisfy this to zero. So, based on that, and then, we look at the operating of the food service fund. Right now, we're expecting to have about 50,000 in expenses in addition to what actually has been spent, which is 2,579. So, it should be about 2.6. Then, there's the revenues of a little over 2 million, and we're estimating the fresh fruit and vegetable, national school lunch program revenue, local food revenue, this money coming in from the general fund that you've appropriated, and optimistically, we put 75,000 of the 107. We collect that between now and June 30th or appropriate that back. Might be a little optimistic. So, right now, that would show, including if those encumbrances got spent, which we don't think we're gonna spend every bit of that, because once tomorrow's done, the payroll stops, all the big stuff fits in. But it would have a $341,000 deficit. You move the 296 and collect some of that money, you know, you wind up being somewhat close, but hopefully, we'll have things more tidied up by next Wednesday. Because again, we'll, we'll start calling around, trying to get invoices and do what we need to do. If you remember, you're supporting the program next year by about 170-some thousand, about 55 in debt and 120 in operations, so we'll see. It does have a, um, a, an unassigned fund balance of 494,000, so that's money just sitting in the account. So, worse come the worst, if in fact it is negative. The only thing we absolutely have to take care of is the meal debt, that is 100%, the operating debt, we would, but there's enough left over from those prior years, we've already satisfied the, um, requirement for what they call a spend-down plan, so we tried to spend money according to what they told us we couldn't, couldn't do, and we've passed all that, so now this money is available. So, I think that might help mitigate this. But hopefully, we'll be a little tighter in a week and two days from now, all right? So, we put together a broad motion to take care, for us to put all this stuff in place, if you wanna recommend that, which is basically saying, raise and appropriate what you need to, to get the fund at balance, satisfy your policy 326 that appropriates the meal debt, and then we'll give you what those final numbers wind up in August, so...
And this is what we've done every year for quite some time, right?
Um, well, yeah, you, I'll either do it now, or we do it in, in the fall. And the only reason I wanna get the auditor's the right numbers and make sure that we are good and be done with 25 as soon as we can.
You're over it? No. It's so over it. 25 is so over.
Yeah.
All right. I will move that the finance committee recommends that the Board of Education raise an appropriate funds to transfer to the food service fund from any fiscal year 2025 leftover proceeds, if any, above 2.8 million to cover the meal debt as required under the meal charging policy number 326, and appropriate any operating shortfall. The administration will inform the Board of the final food service budget status for fiscal year 25 in August. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Electric bus infrastructure. So, this was a diagram I showed you back in May. Still looking similar. We are, uh, very close to finalizing that location. I could talk further in non-public about that if you want, but for now, this is where it sits. Here is the detail, um, that will go into what's gonna happen on that site. The biggest, um, probably open item is gonna be internet to the chargers, and whether we run cables to it, or do we just do a wireless access point? So, I've gotten a quote to do the wireless access point. I'm asking questions about the provider, this Telus about it, they say they have the Wi-Fi. I really wanna talk to somebody that actually uses it, not the vendor themselves.
Yeah.
The other thing is, we did confirm that the Thomas buses are agnostic as it relates to the Telus, the chargers, so it could be any brand. So, I'm going to South Burlington, Vermont with our bus provider, um, Brian Cressy from Cressy, who sells us the buses, because they've been running electric buses for three years. I don't know how many and all, but they have the infrastructure. So, we're gonna South Burlington on Thursday, and then Bedford, Maine on Friday, because they have also the electric. I think the one, though, in, in, um, in, uh, South Burlington have 120 KW, not 60, but at least if it's a vendor, like, Telus, they have them, a 120, 60, I can at least get an idea. You know, did they try Wi-Fi, didn't, what do they space the park, bring a tape measure and everything, because we're all, we're doing this based on specs, and there's not many people that have it, you know? So, we're just trying to make sure we're doing the right thing and getting this. And, um, the vendor, we're gonna be proposing June tonight, that we did the bid, has been fantastic in getting the information we need back for the, the feds. Uh, I think you may have saw it in one of the superintendent's updates about the last thing we got, it's been, we, we met our three things that they have asked for, sent that in, and now they've moved it on in the process. And according to our bus vendor, this is typically from any, um, school districts he's dealt with that are, um, buying electric buses, this is part of the course, you get taken through a whole sequence of events, the next thing you know, the money shows up.
Okay.
So, we check every day to see whether it shows up, I would much rather have it, but he's pretty confident it's coming, I'd rather be like 100% confident, see that money there? So, my, where I'm starting to run into an issue is gonna be, if we don't at least get the infrastructure in the ground, we'd have to wait till next summer. And I don't want, I'm trying to get on their list to put, at least it's stubbed up, we don't have to have it all hooked up, we just wanna have everything done, because we can't, we don't wanna, um, impact the operations up there for leaf collection, snow plowing, buses, so the summer is the ideal part, get a trench, get the pipes in the ground, run the wire, stub them out, get the transformer, there's 120-day lead time for the equipment, so, um, that's why. But this is the one we're gonna recommend. It's about 200,000, what I'm gonna request is an up to, you have two, two different sections, the 59 for the chargers, and I'm gonna do up to 240, just in case, because I don't account for internet here, and I don't know whether, I, my preference would be to hardwire them, but if it becomes a big deal, because one of the things we have, they're 480 volt, how do we get, get it knocked down to 120? Because if you're gonna put internet, you're gonna need to plug in a switch, you're gonna need a repeater to be able to run the internet to them. The other thing this is gonna do is that we are also fitting this out to be able to put in up to five chargers, because we've been saying spec for 10 buses. So, at least the infrastructure's there, and we don't have to go back, the, we'll have all that part at least done, the right transformer in there, try to get it all taken care of now. Because as you see with the middle school project, there's nowhere but up, you know? So, that would take care of it.
So, Jack, what is the role of the internet in charging the bus?
Um, it does the updates to the actual chargers themselves.
Okay.
And also measures the status of the buses when they're plugged in. So, if we can do it on Wi-Fi and it is reliable, because they do also make a 4G, but that's a subscription, and I'd rather really not do cellular. Cellular's not the best up there, where that is, so I'd much rather have the hardwire. The other reason why we want the internet there is, as we've put on the recordings onto the buses now with the audio and video, we wanna be able to download them through internet. Right now, they take the hard drives out, well, anytime that hard drive comes out, it now becomes a potential drop-in, you know? So, I'd much rather be able to hook the Wi-Fi and download the videos. They do make a 4G, 5G service, but it's a fortune to download them. So, getting out internet out to the field would be ideal, but these chargers will need that for, like I said, updates and monitoring the bus.
So, what distance are we going from, for the cabling or the Wi-Fi?
It's over 450 feet. Because what you have to do is you have to go from, this is where this line comes in right here, and they're gonna put, they're gonna peel off right before, so they gotta shut that facility down, peel off of it, and then they're gonna run it to where we're going and put a transformer there.
Yes, my inclu, my preference at this point would be for hardwire as well, but let's follow through.
But then, you're gonna need the 120 volt, so do we have to run a separate conduit for the 120 volt, because we can't, it doesn't have anything to downgrade? That we don't know, and that's what I'm trying to ask questions. So, it'll be cur, it'll be good to see what another district that has this stuff is doing.
I'll be anxious to see that as well.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, let me see, so if I move on to the next piece, which was the Telus ones, um, I've requested the spec on the EV gateway, again, right now, we have planned for two of these with, they don't look, they're just, that's paid, they look like pumps, like fuel pumps. You may have seen something like this, that, like on the Connecticut, whatever that, I can't remember the road is, the throughway one, only way to get down to New York, what the heck's it called? It's like 60 miles, you're on there.
The T-laner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Merritt, that's it, yeah. So, I see them on there as well as the Tesla chargers, but, yeah, they're, they're big. But anyway, about an eight to 10-week lead time, and right now, the latest and greatest quote is 44,900 for two units. And there'll be an annual fee, but they don't look like it that much, a couple hundred bucks a year, which is good. But, so, our timeline for this is, again, the 19th and 20th of the visits, July and August would be, try to get installation in the ground. I did meet with the city attorney two weeks ago, they're sending us amendment for the lease. Installation of an outside Wi-Fi, if that makes sense, if not, what's the installation we need to do to hardwire it? We would expect the arrival and installation of the chargers in September, October. The bus order will go in in October, they're gonna start building the electric buses, including according to Cressy, and they should arrive, he has said December, I put in December, January. I just would hate to hold up and then we can't use them, because they get there, they're, you're not plugging them into a one-time box. They're gonna sit, and they're about as good as putting the, uh, "Help Wanted" sign on them, you know? Um, and we'd rather have operation and wait till next summer to use them. So, that's what's the timeline. So, I put two motions together, one again appropriates that amount up to 240, and the other one awards the contractor for the, uh, contract that we'll put together for them to install.
So, we have to re, there would each be a separate motion to pass, right?
I just, yeah, I did them as separate motions.
That's okay.
But rec, separate recommendations, I should say.
Sounds good. All right. I will move that the finance committee recommend that the Board of Education raise an appropriate amount up to $240,000 from the school building maintenance fund to fund the purchase of electric chargers and the installation, hi, Mary, this way, and the installation of electric school bus chargers at the common operations maintenance facility owned by the city. The committee also directs the administration to work with the city to make any necessary changes to the current 10-year lease. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think my only question about this motion is the final sentence about working on our current 10-year lease. So, if necessary changes need to happen, will it come before the board for review? Okay, then I'm fine.
Okay. Good question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Jim, would you like to...
Sure.
I'm not reading any of them.
All good.
That's fine.
I'm gonna start coughing if I do.
I'm gonna have to turn around here, though, because of the glare. Uh, I will move that the finance committee recommend that the Concord Board of Education award a contract to Longchamp's Electric for up to $200,000 to install electric school bus chargers at the common operations maintenance facility owned by the city.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Middle school. So last meeting, we handed out the old one that was signed on May sixth, two thousand four. Now I just handed you out a revised one. Um, I've submitted that to our general counsel, but I and I our our bond counsel, I should have all that verified by them. They were going back and forth with questions as it relates to what is we weren't doing education planning ourselves, like trying to put in new programs. It was specing out for the architects to design the space. So they were trying to tease out what was educationally something what was like that we wanted to try versus something that was specific to the school for the design, which all of it was. So I I understood what they were asking. So we've clarified all that. Um, and this is basically the same thing. It just changes the location. Um, the biggest thing going back and forth right now is the limit in which you can reimburse yourself. So um trying to get clarification on uh and I think I said the last time I'm working with the architects to tease out how much what percentage of the schematic design amounts have been reused. I hope to have all that for the twenty-fifth, but um that'll be critical when we go to borrow. I think the biggest thing is the reimbursement is eighteen to thirty-six months. So I am thinking that we will probably have to look at borrowing if we want to reimburse ourselves in the next year.
Can you expand again? I'm sorry.
So.
What do you mean by the why is there a timeframe?
It's what they've limited to.
Okay.
But her her terms were eighteen months um from the time the expense is paid or eighteen months from the time it's put into service. So right now, we go back to twenty seventeen for expenses. So I'm trying to argue, well, that was all the planning and all that. We had COVID, but they might say you can't because it's over the three-year mark. Um, right now, a majority of the money's been spent in the last two years, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And that detail is in front of you, by the way. You should see a sheet that totals to the bottom on page two, but that's all the all the amounts. And that's what we're teasing out to for them, me to justify to them. Yep, this is what the architect said. Yes, it was for that site, but they reused X percent here. It's gonna make it complicated. Nice person we deal with, but I think they sleep with the book on their head. We get into very specific detail, so. I wanted to at least get this in motion so that we can start the clock on what we've begun expending on the new contract you approved.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I would just say, so this is gonna be this is something that we will move to the full board on the for the June twenty-fifth meeting?
Yes, and I think I um, yes, we will. Um, and we did that on the nineteenth that I'd bring this. I'm bringing it to you again because it's just keeping it fresh and I want to have a log of the various public meetings we've done this.
Well, and I would say you should modify that date to six sixteen. So you presented to finance on five nineteen and six sixteen?
Oh, yeah, I can I can do that. Yeah, this is for the school board on the twenty-fifth, but I can add a line that says presented to finance on the nineteenth, May nineteenth and then June sixteenth. And then the meeting was held, which we put put in the paper on the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
And we all of a sudden, men, it's just me, they they want a lot of paperwork. Okay, so um the motion that I have for that you did on the nineteenth, you've already done that. Now, the eighteenth, we're looking to move now the cash that has been expended out of the general fund and we need to take it out of the capital uh the capital reserve and satisfy the general fund for the June thirtieth. And that amount is four and a half million that's been spent. So we want to at least catch that cash up now. Um, so that the audit books and all look fine. And then we'll address anything else in October as it relates to other expenses. Because the contract you approved for the South Street site, you know, we're we're in the process of and this includes all those expenses as of today. Uh, I think we're all done for the for the month. There's usually about the eighth of the month we get from the architects and I don't anticipate anything more this month. It'll all start for next fiscal year. But the capital fund's a non-lapsing fund, so we're tracking all the expenses. We have everything back to the seventeenth. I think we've put it on the web. When we got the request, it's all out there, so on our website. But I just need a motion to recommend to the full board that they authorize the transfer to satisfy it.
Okay, I will move that the finance committee recommend that the Board of Education authorize a transfer of four million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from the Facilities and Renovation Trust Fund Expendable Trust Fund to cover the capital expenditures for the new middle school project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
It's more of a it's more of a broader question that's probably come up elsewhere, but it does relate to finance, which is that given how long we have been on this journey and the change in location and the expected tariffs, how robust is our current contract with HMFH? Is it something that is worth revisiting, renegotiating? Are they feeling good about what's on paper between the district and the company?
Well, at least your contract is fixed, so it doesn't escalate as the years go by. That's the number and they have given credit for what the work was done from the schematic design. I think the schematics design portion was the two hundred fifteen thousand versus the initial one was one point five million. So they've given credit for that. But I think where we are right now, I think your big decision's gonna come when you get the numbers.
Right.
That's and that'll be September is my understanding. So.
And they've issued no project change orders or anything at this point?
Nope, everything has still been included.
Okay, great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And then just in case, I just put a quick chart together saying the summary of stuff that we just did tonight, which was again, the to be determined as it relates to the Food Service Fund, the meal debt and operations piece. That'll all tie out. The four million that is gonna be um coming into the general fund is revenue because it's coming out of the capital um project, the trust fund. And then the expense of going out to the School Building Maintenance Fund, then the revenue coming into twenty-six and the expense going out in twenty-six for the chargers and then the two forty for the school building ma- from the School Building Maintenance Fund and an expense to take care of the electric bus infrastructure. I think that covers what we did recommended tonight.
And I love these viewpoints, thank you.
Um, do we have a discussion coming up on um Memorial Field? Understanding that the city has budgeted for half of the design cost in their upcoming budget. Um, when is that conversation coming to the board for if we would need to modify the twenty-five, twenty-six budget to to meet them halfway?
So I'll I'll I think, Jim, I think I'll let you you speak to it because I think Matt said to me that you proposed a motion at your committee and you can talk about what you did based on what I had talked about the city and then I'll go into more detail.
Okay, because uh the last meeting, I proposed a motion that we direct our respective business administrators to discuss, you know, how we would pay for the next phase, which would be the design phase of the project, which currently is estimated at one point five million. That didn't really get approved by that was at the at the meeting was myself and uh Mr. Fantasy and Mr. Foot from the city.
It was just you representing the board?
That was just me and yes, at that meeting, this past meeting. They kind of tabled that.
Okay.
Until that. Uh, the next meeting coming up in uh July will get us better numbers and phase uh schedules, you know, timelines. And then I would expect that in the August meeting, we would be discussing it here for us. Essentially, the discussions have gone on to have been revolving around what we want included in this project, which include the biggest issue was parking. Yeah, the biggest thing to come up in the discussion point that has been uh that the public has been concerned about and everything is parking. Um, we originally started to look at the exploring, obtaining additional land in the cornfield area from the state to be able to have parking. That could be a long-term project. So we have proceeded not um to not to depend on that, but to depend on the parking design that they're putting in and that was in there by I'm sorry, I forget the name of our design group, the consulting group that was doing that. Um, they, one of the universal things was um that when they presented this a year or more ago, a year or so here, they had drainage as phase two. Pretty pretty generally and pretty unanimously, we said, you know, drainage needs to be fixed right in front. So we will see what phase one involves. Latest version has three fields down in the uh western part of it, I believe um of the property. It would uh have then and they would be built pretty much concurrently because it would be savings and construction. That would be after the drainage and then after that, it would be modifications to the baseball field and the two softball fields. Um, and things like the uh concessions locker, those would be in phase two. And at this point, we're not looking to change the uh to significantly change the tennis courts and the basketball courts because they're the most.
And they look great, yeah.
And they well, they were recent, they're the most recently updated and they're in great shape. So we kind of said, let's build around that to uh to to minimize costs. Now, we had some public testimony that said, no, we should move into the move those. We had some public testimony that said, you know what? We should fill in the wetlands and just go for it.
Isn't that illegal?
I think there's I don't think it's illegal, but I think it's a very time-consuming uh process to make your appeals or your, you know, uh to make to get approval from the appropriate authorities.
Right. So it's una- it's unauthorized without special access, yeah.
I'm not an expert, but I think we're adding a sedated timeline onto that. The committee was not so anxious to pursue that. We didn't recommend that at this time. So uh I think that our next meeting will have a significant amount of information and that's when we will see um phasing and timeline. My personal opinion is that the phasing will shift more expense to phase one. And um we'll see where that is. And that that timeline is actually, you know, next summer being construction and going through that. One thing that was presented is that our uh this is probably the last year we can actually use the track safely.
Right, yeah.
And uh, Jack, you could probably explain better than I that we can use the football field, but we'll certainly have to be uh renting lights and other things to maintain safety.
We have been, yeah. You know, we spend about between all lights and everything, four or five thousand just to because they have those lights on, we have temporary lights, but we pay for the electricity of those lights when they run. So comes in about that.
So we so all that to say, we don't need to move on anything right now and it sounds like there's gonna be continued review in July.
Right, I believe our next meeting is um the tenth, somewhere near. But I would expect that if we have a meeting in the finance committee at late July, that would be the time that we could talk about that here in this committee.
Okay, I would recommend um if if both board member representatives can't attend, that there be an option to see if somebody can sit in so that there's an equal. Not to say that two against one has a big deal, but you know, having equal representation in the conversation.
I I think so that, you know, you're taking pressure off the one person who has to be there.
Yeah, yeah. And especially with summer vacations coming up, I'm just hoping that we can be in communication with each other about if somebody can't attend.
Yeah, that uh that particular um the uh the situation came up, you know, about twenty minutes before the meeting starts.
It happens, yeah.
Wasn't much that we could do at that particular time. But normally, if we know that one of us cannot attend, we ask the executive committee to see if they can find someone else. And I agree, I think we should continue to do that because um, you know, that way you're not depending on any single person and we're getting a better discussion and a better representation of the board.
Right, and just a commitment to the sense of urgency about the project.
No, I agree.
All right, thank you. And what were you gonna say about?
Oh, just that um, you know, I I've spoke with the deputy city manager for finance and like we said, we'll wait for them. But there's a variety of options between cash um from our side. Uh, it's my understanding, the way it's written in the budget, one point five million and then it has a donation for seven fifty. That's the way they appropriate it. It's just however we come up with it. But, you know, do they borrow it and then we pay a payment like we are with the comp for the fuel farm? Or do we borrow our side, give cat? There's a variety of options. Um, as you said, once they direct us, we'll have a conversation with our mutual financial advisor, which is Hilltop Securities, and they'll give us the best route to go to do this.
And and it's a discussion that, you know, the full board will need to have because we do not own that property.
Right.
Um, and we would be committing a fair amount of uh money to a property that we don't own. Now, we're all the city and we're working cooperatively, but there are probably some legal and financial nuances that we we should be, you know, we should understand thoroughly.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, you'll get you'll get the full you'll you'll have options. It'll be given to you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, for sure.
So that was the summary and then the only thing I put was a non-public. If there was anything you heard tonight that you wanted more detail on that maybe I could not talk in public about. But I think if not, that was all I had and I am I'm finished.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Does everybody agree? Are we all in favor?
Yes.
We could discuss it, but we're not. That's passed. Have a good evening, everybody.
Adjourned at six seventeen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, for all your work.